At West Tennessee Bank, we speak in simple terms. No big fancy words or hard to understand language. Just good old fashioned values and a strong commitment to the communities we serve. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
All right, here's the floor on present. So we go ahead and proceed with the meeting. Welcome everyone out to our regular July meeting. First thing I want to ask for motion to approve the agenda.
I propose to approve the agenda.
All right, we have a motion second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks go, then it is approved. And the first thing on our agenda will be our consent agenda.
I propose to approve.
Our motion second that it will be approved. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That is approved then. And the next thing is going to be delegations. Correct me if you can, your parents say correct.
Yes, sir. Parent Jenna Griggs is here on behalf of Nick Shannon. And again, she would like you. From the narrative we have, she's requesting to appear before you gentlemen to appeal decision of her son's denial for continued enrollment in Chester County schools. These are going to be a freshman.
Yes.
So you got the information there. Ms. Shannon, you can come on up and share your position.
I'm struggling sometimes to help me through. I'm trying to try not to be emotional and I don't know. I just want to thank you all for taking the time to hear my appeal. I'm asking for the reconsideration of my son Nick to be allowed to attend Chester County High School. Last year was our first year at Chester County. We love everything about being here in Houston. It's been really amazing. We moved from Adana where all of my children have attended since kindergarten due to the need of my mother since the passing of my father. Just the reason why we moved back. I'm not trying to make excuses for Nick. But if you could give you all a little bit of background. After moving last summer, we had a devastating event happen in our family. I've been willing to go into more detail and in more private study. You seem to have some questions on that. That and the move has caused a bit of a hurdle for Nick this past year. Part of this, Nick had never been in trouble one time at the United Schools. He actually, you know, I was telling a lot of people that, you know, he would bring out his little pulpit that he would make and wanted to be a preacher and do that. At home, I've even got videos of it. So, you know, he has a very good Christian heart. I believe Nick made very poor choices this year and he needs to be held accountable, definitely. But not allowing him to attend a high school where his sister Cara will be attending will only hurt him. Nick is willing to do community service at any time. He knows he has a lot to prove to a lot of people. Please, I beg you to make this one decision that will impact my son's life in a big way. His report card was all As and Bs. And if you ask most anyone, they will tell you Nick is a very respectful young man. Yes, he has showed poor character last year, but we are both asking that he be given the chance to show he can represent this one great way. Nick participates in football and both the junior high and high school coaches have said they have never had a problem with Nick. And Coach Robinson is here to support Nick tonight. Nick was selected last year to get part of the All-Star team and represent Chester County, which he did. And he was also received an intensive MVP award on the football team last year. I think Nick has a little bit to say in that advance.
I want you to apologize for my behavior last year. If you give me a second chance, I promise to show everyone that I can be an excellent student. I realize that I put my family down and that is the worst part of the vote. Chester County is a outstanding, outstanding school that I'm hooked to go to.
The five unexcused absences, what? Who were family related issues?
No, sir. Four of those were in-school suspension, I believe. He had perfect attendance. His name was actually on the board in the cafeteria up until that point where he did get into a little bit of trouble at school. And then one of them, I believe, might have been when there was that threat and people were...
Young man, you read a statement. Can you look us in the eye and apologize? The thing that I see here is disrespectful behavior.
I apologize. I didn't want to. I wasn't...
Nick, I would say, I know this is a hard thing to do. It's hard enough to stand up in front of your peers, in front of your classroom, and now you're being asked to stand in front of a bunch of men that you don't know from out. I know that there's people who have advocated for you. But, you know, again, we want you to understand how serious it is. And we take it seriously, obviously, or you wouldn't be here. You know, we expect... Your academics are good. The gentlemen know that he had three As or three Bs and two As. So that's commendable academics. The attendance, we don't like to see five unexcused absences. We understand that people get sick. And definitely, we don't like it because of the in-school suspension. The disrespectful behavior, those things that's a choice that you made, well, all of the discipline issues were choices that you made. But some of them are a little bit more superficial than others. But making decisions to say some things, which all I did was pull off from your discipline record, what was recorded by Mr. McPeet. So some of that content, they know what that content is that led to that disrespectful behavior. What was not included was something that happened toward the end of the school year with some type of smoke bomb or some type of...
It was a smoke bomb.
So kind of add a narrative to that. What happened there?
I was giving a seat. Well, it was something we enjoyed. I wasn't thinking just about it. I should have just done it.
Well, Nick, think about this too. Because in life, you're going to have people that want to put you up to a bunch of dares in life. Some good dares, some bad dares, mostly bad. So you've got a good head on your shoulders, use it. Don't fall into some temptation to do something that will get you in a situation like you are right now, having to defend your character in front of a bunch of people that you are uncomfortable around. Now, Coach Robinson has already said to me that he would hold you accountable. I don't know if you've ever held his bicycle handshake, but I would say he could back it up if he needed to. Okay?
Nick, I want to say that, you know, I appreciate you coming and standing up. I know it is hard as Troy says. But I think it, to me, we all think we've got a great student system. And we think, you know, if anybody comes out here, we think they're... It's really, I guess, almost an honor. I don't mean that bragging, but I mean compared to a lot of systems, it really is. Only thing I will ask is that you do know that, you know, you're going to have to behave. And I'm going to ask, Mr. Cadet back there... Mr. Cadet will hold you accountable. And if you don't behave, then I have a feeling you might not be in our system a lot longer. So you're going to have to, you know, if you are allowed to come back, you're going to have to behave. And the football coach and Dr. Cadet is going to hold you accountable. Behave, stay out of trouble.
If you mess up, that man right there will deal with it.
Nick, I talked to your mom and didn't realize who she was. And I know I knew your grandfather, your grandmother, I know your whole family. I had all your aunts at Liberty. And when she talked to me, you know, she was laying her heart on the line to try to help you. And that's what parents do, you know. But you make choices. And what I did, so you understand kind of how this process worked. When Mr. Kilzer asked me about it, I knew your sister was in school and has always done a great job for us. But I asked the principal, Dr. Anderson, a few questions. She told me, the final question, I said, "If he was coming back into eighth grade, would you accept him back into your school?" And she said, "No." Based on his behavior, I would not. And my response to her was, "Well, I don't want to get to... If I don't know him, it's real easy for me to say, 'Oh, no, I don't want him,' if I don't know him." You know what I'm saying? Because it's about our relationships and what you're doing, our community. And like they said, it's an honor to be a Chester County Eagle. And I know Coach Robinson came and talked to me. So if the board allows you, you're not going to be eyeballing all the time. And if you do this one other thing, but you know what's right and wrong. And we'll have a straight conversation. If you can't handle yourself and don't make good choices, my recommendation will be back to here that you go somewhere else. Okay? And we'll help you. We'll educate you. We'll let you participate in athletics and do everything we can for you. But you have got to have the character, as Coach mentioned. And because your grandfather, your grandmother, your parents expect for you to. Okay? So that's the reason Mr. Kilzer is out tonight, based on that. But I'm certainly willing to take a chance if the board approves. He needs Chester County, in my opinion. But that's up to you guys to decide.
I make a motion to allow him to come back based on most circumstances. And if you screw up, which we hope you don't ever again, what Mr. Cadet said is what happened.
Where are you zoned?
Southside.
Graduated Southside. It's not the same Southside High School as when I was in school. So he's in a great place. And I know you know that. I hope he knows that.
Well, this time next year, Nick, we'll be doing the same thing again. Every out of county, tuition, paying student, family, I go through every student's academic success or lack of, attendance success or lack of, behavior success or lack of. I look at them all. And if you don't measure up, you'll get that same denial there. Measure up. Mr. McPeet?
Yes, sir.
Anything to add?
Nick's always been respectful. He, when football was in season and he was held accountable, I had no problems. But when football ended, he started hanging with the wrong bunch and just, it was little bitty things that just kept getting a little more, a little more. He was told probably about March, "Look, you're out of count." And we had this conversation some, and the decision he made at the last day of school is what made Dr. Anderson so mad and rightly so. I have no problem with what Dr. Cadet said. I think he's a good kid that made some bad choices and he didn't realize, like most kids do, what the consequence was going to be. And the things that he did were minor up until that last day. And I think it's because it was the last day and it happened and we were making a celebration for our eighth graders and that made the severity of it. But I hope that he can stay in our system and I hope he can make better choices from here on out.
Would that be your recommendation to take with us?
Yes, it would.
Coach, you got anything to say?
I agree with what everybody else said. You know, for me, you know, as a just educator, also as a coach and a father, you know, and helping to raise kids in Chester County, you know, they need men in our lives, okay? Like you, like just sitting in here in this room today, okay? And I'm talking about everybody in here and women, okay? That will look at a young man and say, you know, "This is wrong and you will be held accountable." Because they don't get that a whole lot. They don't get... Kids these days are not held accountable for their actions, okay? And for us to sit here and tell this young man straight forward that, you know, "You're going to be held accountable, okay? You're going to be held accountable for Dr. Cadet. You're just not going to be held accountable for me. We know you were held accountable in front of the school board and our superintendent Kilzer, okay?" So everything you do, like Dr. Cadet said, you're not going to be just watched. And we're not watching to see when you mess up or if you mess up, okay? All right? We're there to help raise and guide and grow young men, okay? And that's something I think everybody in this room takes pride in, is growing our young people in Chester County. And, you know, if you allow it, I'll look forward to helping grow this young man.
I second.
Do we have a motion second that Nick may be allowed to attend school this year in Chester County? Any other discussion?
You didn't know, like Superintendent Kilzer said. Step out of line real bad, this will be the same thing next year. Just think about it.
Anything else?
I think, well, I think the... What I would remember if I were in your shoes, it seemed like every time you were called to defend, your defense is, "I didn't think." Well, your motto this year should be, "Think."
I was triggered. I didn't make a chart.
Let's think and just stay forward. It'll be okay.
Anything else? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks, I would ignore being back in the Chester County streets. Be a good street.
Now, folks, if you're...
I think you should, everyone of you. Grow up, son. It has a big difference in your life. Tell them I appreciate you.
Just they're good. Hey, Nick, one more shake.
Back to Cali.
All right. The next thing on the agenda is going to be the recommendations and change in TSB A. We've got a whole lot of those, but definitely because of changes in the law.
There's a lot of public chapters, of course, like most of you learned when you went to that summer law institute. There's a lot of changes.
More accounting.
And more accounting. This was what the TSB A had sent us, or I sent it to Shane and Mark to kind of peruse through that, to see if there's any additions. The recommendations I make are based on, in some cases, as you see, just full acceptance of what that policy is, the draft. In some cases, there were places that we had to personalize it with our own LEA expectation. Few cases, and I tried to articulate those points with each one of those policies. I will attempt to answer any questions you may have about any individual policy, but just like what was already suggested, we might just make a, I make a recommendation to approve them all at once. I think that would be fine. I had a question on, I think it was...
That contract?
No, I don't think it was that. I think there was a blank left on the video from school bus. How long we were going to maintain those? Which policy number was that?
It said 6.308.
Okay, 6.308.
Is that right?
This was down in the narrative below the reg. Now, if you're going based on the email address or the email, I don't know if I was that blank there.
Well, maybe I just thought you did.
No, no, no. Well, here's what the guidance from Chuck Hagle. I don't know who led yours. The TSB A.
Ben was on that.
Okay, Ben Torres. Okay. Chuck Hagle, who represents several districts as the legal guide for educational law, his advice was, because everybody has different systems as far as, like, for example, if one of the camera systems on the buses, if it's just let running continuously, what's the cycle of hours?
Depends on the older or the newer ones. The older ones, maybe two weeks.
I was going to say it's a couple of weeks.
So if you ran them all the way.
It works off a hard drive. In a sense, so it just re-records over the same hard drive. So that's why Chuck Hagle let it somewhat vague. Now, again, we would have to personalize that. And that's probably an error in my judgment. So I would say then, I make a recommendation within a week's time, within a five-day period.
And they brought that up at the seminar.
They did.
If a parent was going to challenge it, they should have, and within a week after that, you shouldn't be held responsible.
That would be my recommendation. Because again, beyond that, if it's been, you know, and not all of these camera systems are made the same.
Most of ours will just, they only run when the, a little bit before you start, when you start the bus.
Yep.
And then they'll go about five minutes after. And they'll go about a month. I mean, we got a couple of months, three months, four months, sometimes even more.
But we wouldn't want to wait till two to three months down the road. I'd say my recommendation would be within a week, within a five-day period.
So there's nothing in law that says how long?
No, sir. That's up to the discretion. And in some cases, school buses are not camera.
Some of them don't have them.
Some of ours are malfunctioning. They're older, so.
Well, it's moot on those anyway. So this just gives them the language that we grew up on with these cameras that because of FERPA, that we did not have to show it because their child would not be the only one in the camera shot. But now the version is, well, yeah, but that's still a student record and they're entitled to it. Now, the guidelines have to be specific. They have to be at the superintendent or his or her designated location. You don't hand a copy of the filming to the studio or the family. They watch it within the scope of that setting and then that's it. I think it can go, well, obviously, this was a consideration because, again, when we say, "Your child's going to be five days off the bus because he cussed the bus driver." And they say, "My child said they didn't do it." Well, we know it because we watched the camera. Well, show me the camera. Well, we can't. So it kind of makes it look like we're setting them up for failure. So this at least will provide a little bit better confirmation that we're not out to get your child because of whatever issue. Any other questions? I make... How much we approve all of them?
I second.
Do we have a motion second to approve all of the changes in policy? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was going to say that's what we approve. Next thing on the agenda is going to be a request to approve the purchase of some district vehicles. Troy, what did you kind of explain, thinking on that?
Okay. Well, as the narrative provides, Stacy and I, back last, somewhere between February through March or April, we had a conversation around ways to adjust the planning for the district budget. And we were looking at the amount of funds that were going out to pay mileage reimbursements to several different people. Again, we have, you know, if there is a conference to go to, if there is a park to pick up for whatever maintenance, I mean, excuse me, bus shop maintenance, those are just two examples that we've been paying mileage out to those individuals for their service because they're using their own personal vehicles. More recently, Britt and I and Stacy stood in the kitchen and spoke about some options to look at. Right now, we have a 2013 model Ford Escape that we've been using for drivers in. Leased it through Ronnie Confort. Alan Britton offered a very, very reasonable price for paying that out. We've had it for three years. For $2,300 and change, he offered to sell us that vehicle so that we could use it outright for just transportation to and from. We also, because of our, some of our student populations who have certain disabilities, there's at least two, isn't that right? One, that's going to be assigned to the school for the deaf in Jackson. We, as a school district, are required by law to provide transportation to and from. In the past, we were always led to believe that you had to put on a school bus and make that transportation. If that be the case, you'd have to have a licensed bus driver and an aide in addition to the student and the bus, which, again, you have your mileage and you have your mileage restrictions and your years restriction on those buses. We, Britt has learned since that we can satisfy what we have to in transportation with just a regular vehicle, licensed driver, and you don't require to have an additional person, staff member to ride with him.
How come? How come you used to, but now you don't?
On the bus.
On the bus.
On the sped bus, it is.
On the bus, it's different.
So again, we're...
We're sure about that.
I, Melinda emailed sped and state and that was, they said we didn't.
So again, we've got a commitment verbally with Alan Britton, he would sell us that. We would go into a new lease with a newer vehicle similar to the same style. The SUV was what was requested for Brandon because of the drivers in. They liked how it sets up better. And most of these kids or mamas and daddies have these SUVs. So it gets them more familiar with that type of driving style. So we would go into a new lease. We've already got the dollars budgeted for the lease anyway. And we would just pay outright. And then Britt was going to take a look at some type of low-cost truck, pickup truck that's got some...
Can say the state surplus?
States.
I looked there, looked on the state, and we'll probably look at byboard. And then Mr. Carter has one that he's got that's in good shape too. It would fit to go for get parts and things like that.
I know at least a lot of stuff comes up on that state surplus deal.
Yeah, we looked at it. And Stacy looked at it that day, checked through. We've been in a state contract.
And that change is almost weekly.
Yeah, they buy and sell.
There's other districts around us are doing this. And I'm saying, we're not doing it just because of that, but they're doing it because of the same reason that we're discussing right now. It cuts down on your mileage expenses. And again, you don't necessarily budget as well for that as you could because you don't necessarily know how often somebody's going to get in their own vehicle and go. So if the vehicles are available for transportation, either short distance or long distance, then we'll use those vehicles instead.
What age child are we talking about?
They're usually in the three-year-old, five-year-old range. Do a car seat would be?
Yes, most likely.
I make a motion that we approve the request of purchase of district vehicles. And right now, we're looking at two.
Second.
Do we have a motion second that we approve the purchase of two vehicles? Any other discussion?
Will two fill the need? Well, two is a lot better than where we are today. Sure, but are we going to be almost in the same boat with the one vehicle being utilized to transport a student back and forth to Jackson? I don't have a third vehicle that I've looked at for a low mileage or a low income or a low cost. I'm just, I'm just fine seeing where two gets us before we take a third one as a commitment.
Anything else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Folks, go that we approve for two vehicles. I guess we can all bring it back over. We just had a row of four vehicles.
Thank you.
And then the next thing is going to be approval for the audio visual lighting equipment bids at the auditorium.
Again, this information, as you agreed here, was provided by Britt when they, after the bid opening on the eighth. Of course, Shane and I were, was that two days ago?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. That's right, yesterday morning. We were in that facility. It looks, thus far, in the space of the flooring's done, the walls are done, the ceiling's done. It looks really nice. I mean, it's a real nice setup and it will be impacted even more when those seats are installed. The audiovisual, again, as you see here what the bid was for initially, again, we were targeting first to do just the audio only, but as fate would have it, the lighting board goes out, the first presentation of the newsies production. So good situation, we're fixing it all at once. So this lowest bid for deal includes, again, the lighting as well as the audiovisual. And the distinction between that first bid of $47,855 has been, again, that was with a few of the speakers coming out of China. And now with, because of the tariff on China goods, the return on that shipment would come much later than what would be good for us with trying to coordinate getting this work done prior to the seating being put in. So it's not one group waiting for another group to get finished. So that's why the recommendation was to go to a higher, again, Britt spoke to... Britt spoke to Dill and got this other additional amount of $2,600 for speakers that are available now, right? Or can be gotten in a few days, right?
Now, these are speakers that are as good or better?
Yes.
Okay, anything, Shane?
Plus, I'm looking at Dill, they're local, they're from South Jackson, so they'll tend to them. I mean, so they've been around and...
Irreputable?
Very reputable, yeah. The other two bids came in, which we asked for the lighting package and the sound package, but theater people, they always have to rent mics, wireless mics. And we were, I had a top budget of, I wanted to stay under $60,000. So I put in an option... were, I had a top budget of, I wanted to stay under $60,000, so I put in an option for wireless mics. Most everybody's bid was six, the two other bids that came in were $60,000 before the wireless mics were in. Deals came in lower, but what he was trying to do is he, he, he knows Marty Phillips and he just, he really cut down on the labor for the install, so that way we could have, if we wanted some wireless mics, we could get the full package and, and he sort of was just doing it for, because he knew, you know, his context of this county and knows the kids, and he just wanted our kids to have something at a good price.
I make a motion to approve the bid.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second, approve the bid, that's for $50,461, $49,000. All right, any other discussions? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
I suppose no, that is approved. Getting better all the time, Shane. All right, next thing, uh, is going to be some staffing changes, and I'm sure we've still got, still changing.
We still, I know Thomas is here, or was he?
Was he?
Thomas is here, uh, this week, or not just this week, started on, what, Wednesday? Uh, yesterday morning, we started with the mentoring week with the new current hired certified staff. All of those that are included, I believe, have been here yesterday and today. Um, they've had two good days to work with their staff. Some of those I see that are, have not been there, but, uh, but these are new staff hires for this 19, 20 year thus far. Positive with the hires that you've had?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Great group.
We've still got some outstanding positions yet to fill. Uh, one is the library and media specialist, but we're getting closer to that role, hopefully get some support to learn what is going to be allowable. But what you have on your spreadsheet was just a, uh, a collection of all the ones who are either hired, reassigned, or chose to not return, either choice made or they chose.
Dr. Chapman?
Sir.
Our band director, what do you think?
He's, oh, I think, I met with, uh, went by the other day, they were at our practice and Mr. Henning, who is thirty-two, thirty-three-year retired band director from Madison County, he said he's never seen a smoother transition, uh, from band director to students. The students have accepted him and, uh, he is, he is a class, uh, guy. He, actually, today, he texted me and wanted to have a, uh, program for his parents tomorrow night.
Seven o'clock.
Just to show them what, kind of what's going on. I mean, he's, he's a go-getter.
Same clock from Madison County?
No, no, sir, he's from Alabot.
Alabot?
Yes, sir, he's from Alabot.
I spoke to him today, he's already got commitments out of these kids, and he said that we're usually working off a two-week band camp. They've been working off a one week, and the commitments, of course, it's not all on the clock, working the whole time, but they're going from eight to eight. So, the kids are working, working, taking a break, working, taking lunch, taking supper breaks, coming back, working through eight o'clock and be back the next morning. He says the first song is ready.
And, and he, he did the fight song for us, and so that's going to be something that we do on the field and do some marching on the field, football. He's already, uh, gotten, you know, orchestrated to do that, so he's, he's, he's doing a great job.
Have we got an assistant?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We, uh, we have, we hired a choral director who junior high and high school will be a split, and she'll help, um, sixth period with band. Her name's Janet Sane. Uh, and then there's a gentleman, Jacob Miller, at the junior high, who's going to be an after-school assistant band director. So, actually, we picked up another, another person to kind of help, uh, with the program, so it's a good, it's a good, good fit.
He's got about, I think he said seventy-two, seventy-five, something like that, that are students performing. So, that's a good number to start with, especially with the transition and the shortened practice time.
Any other questions or comments? All right, the basic thing here is, uh, Troy was addressing the superintendent evaluation and Cora, that you commented on that. As I said, I'm sorry, as I said before, I look at this as something for him to look at and see where he can make improvement and use it, you know, as a critique, but, you know, not criticism, I say, but what we can work on before we can get better.
Well, now, criticism can be positive or negative. Uh, I treat it as whatever you make of it, you can, but, again, this was the first time that I felt like I, I wanted to verbalize or at least put in writing some commitments that I wanted to make, to focus on, because as I, I don't want to be a hypocrite because I'm saying the same thing to principals and the principals to the teachers, that when you receive the feedback, the expectations, the feedback that you have, you receive that you do something with it, do something constructive with it to grow from it. So, again, as I had a chance after that board meeting to review where I was the previous year, hey, I'm making progress, 2.6% increase, I can't complain, so thank you. Uh, the, uh, the, the focus, though, is going to be over the area that was overall the lowest scores, which was staff and personnel relationships. And then more specifically, as it reads there, develops good staff morale and loyalty to the system. Um, in that setting, again, we have the fortunate opportunity, and I point to Mark because Heather, his wife, has also been in, in conversation recently, talking about last school year, with a group that you trust, who we partner with, with unemployment benefits. And they have a program, as it's explained here, called the Appreciation Team. And it's really a key component to their program because they feel like, and rightfully so, not only with their focus on students, showing appreciation to all staff, but also having staff show appreciation back to the students. So, there's an increased, uh, level of respect and increased amount of, of support for both sides. So, I know that Heather has been, uh, visiting, he or she and Amy Eats have, uh, received some support from them, and actually, there's actually some material support from you trust. But, um, Westchester School told me that they're also investing in. So, I, we've got all these different schools or settings that are going to be supporting the cause. So, it is going to be a, 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 an intentional focus on improving, and I'm going to be able to hopefully benefit from that progress. So, I've set myself a personal goal. I want to have one point overall increase in that score, so that's what I'm shooting for.
So, you're going to agree on, agree by stakes for all the employees?
Well, I haven't, I haven't got there yet.
Huh?
If you join me on the grid.
I will.
Okay.
I'll fan you.
We got it.
That's good, that's good. Any comments? There you go. Thank you, Mr. Gill.
Sure, thank you.
The next thing is going to be updates and, uh, there's going to be a baseball start here.
Meeting with the guy tomorrow, project manager, tomorrow. Get the contract signed, get the metal samples, and hopefully they'll just plop them right down.
All right, very good.
See, we'll go in August the 26th at the auditorium.
Very little dirt work on the, the baseball side, but the softball's going to require some dirt work to get that back in.
Have they finished the, redone the, the drive behind the football field?
Chad lot did the football field today, Eastchester tomorrow.
I knew it hadn't been there the other day.
He just got there, he was on it today.
Okay.
He's got, I think, thirteen, fourteen gravel loads down on that, and Eastchester will be, they'll put the gravel down and he'll spread it on Saturday, and they'll be complete.
Because I know that hasn't been done.
Well, I want to say kudos to Britt too, because he's overseeing all this this summer, and I would hope you agree with me that the paving, the resealing and surfacing looks fantastic.
Parked, that's what I'm saying.
It looks really good.
Makes it work, parked out here.
Yes.
These lads.
So, and, and really, as you go on the middle school side back there that faces, uh, the Pittman Sportsplex, they painted just yesterday.
Thirteen new spots there.
Thirteen new spots right there. So, we have an additional parking area where it kind of quietens. Uh, it looks really nice because it's very clear, you don't have people who would be blocking traffic, and you have clear busing lanes to and from, and you have still parking available all the way up and down during the school hours for people who want to choose to park along that way, like the high school vocational building or the football. So, it looks really good, this company's done really well.
It's, it's, I'm sorry, Coach. Yeah, we're going to talk about the same thing, same thing. Can, can we bring up some new business right here, just to ask a question?
Yes, sir.
We were in conversations when our, uh, uh, meeting we went to the last Monday and Tuesday, and we, we tried to figure out, I was counting, junior high has five sports, high school has five sports, and Ms. Reeves and I were talking today about we're putting them on a calendar, but we, as we know, the bus need is, is, I mean, we can't even find buses to take our sporting events to where we want to. We've had conversations in the past, why couldn't we purchase vans or things like that? And we're not talking about the, the big buses like church buses, but there, there's been some discussion about insurance and things like that, but we're in a desperate need of just getting our athletics because we're, we're, and I understand where Ms. Reeves is coming from, we can't even leave till they get back off routes after four o'clock. Well, some of these, uh, cross-country meets and volleyball, they've got to get to where they're going and be there, and they can't wait till four o'clock. So, we got carpooling going on, which we have found out is okay, but, you know, there's a need.
Problem, you know, and you can find your, um, caravan, Dodge van, whatever, that's the same shape.
Eighteen-passenger.
You can't do fifteen, you can only do personal.
Well, now, LaFosse School System's got the, like, church classes.
You can't do that, that's-
When, when do they?
I don't know how long it is, but that's-
It's been the last couple of years.
We checked out with LD and that, you can't do, you can do personal minivans, the seven-seaters, and like Northside uses those.
We bought three vans over there that were all the same body style, and they were $1,500, $2,000 van, had several miles on them, but our mechanics worked on it, we wrapped them to where, you know, show pride in the school and, and, uh, you know, those, those baseball teams, softball teams took those vans, you know, two or three of them in a caravan, and it's just, you know, and some parents, uh, we've got great parents and they're trying to make, um, arrangements to take kids here and there, but, but it, it is, it's starting to be a problem with us being able to get kids in the spring.
No, really, he said it's bad in the fall.
Because the sports that have to leave three o'clock, the cross-country doesn't really have a choice because their venues are not lighted. If they don't get there on time and early.
It, it creates a thing where, you know, the junior high feels like they're less important if you bump their bus. You know, we don't want to say, "Well, you know, we got dibs on the bus."
But, but the problem was, I was at that position, and high school had district matches. So, it did take, I mean, I've been on both sides, it did take precedent that the high school got to go, but-
Creates a problem.
It's going, it's going to get just a little more, and I, we're just going to start the conversations to, to start thinking about what some solutions could be.
And I wanted to jump up when you said a third one, but I mean, I don't want to be out of line or say something, you know, not, not speaking with Mr. Gill first about it, but if you could get a third vehicle, if we could try it with a minivan possibility, just to have that to start and see if it works and see how much it helps, because you can find one of those things, um, for under $3,000, they're pretty competitive.
So, you, you can't get a 15-passenger van?
Coach, can you, can you get a 15-passenger?
How can you get a 15-passenger?
But you can't transport 15-passengers.
Churches do there.
Right.
Well, you, LD, the way the THP told us over there, you can't do it anymore, and I think it shows the law, you can use it.
Well, can you double-check on that? Because I was under the impression that you could still run the van, but you can't have 15 passengers in the van.
Uh, I'll check on it, but now, he shows the law that said, we were asking about it.
How many athletes are we transporting? I'm sorry, Coach.
No, no, uh- Some, some eighteen, you know, twelve.
We're talking about these for our smaller little groups. Uh, I know our volleyball, even, it, it would be, it would be smaller groups.
Yeah, you know, I mean-
Would a minivan fill the need?
Not just one, not just one.
The, the issue is, in the busing, we have, at best, four spares. Now, four spares meaning like if you're going on a long trip, you would pull a nice bus off and then put a spare there, but that can only take us four deep, but you usually want to have one spare here in case the bus breaks down, so that leaves you three buses that could leave before routes get in.
You have drivers.
If you have drivers for them. And Mr. Joe is pretty much, other than the coaches, that can drive the bus, Mike Goff can drive his own team.
I can help him.
Both can, Mike Goff.
Both can, some are starting to get theirs, and I've told the coaches, now, if they get there as long, but now, it would help with the scheduling, because sometimes junior high and high school will schedule five and six away games on one day at the same time. We can't cover them.
See, some of that's out of our power too, because those schools are scheduling us and we're scheduling them, so I mean, we can't, if it's a district game and we're away, they're away, but it just sometimes falls. What, what, what happens is, is you've got some parents that can pile four in, then you may have two or three kids that are sitting aside, maybe their parents are not there. And, you know, either they can't go, or we got to get the coach, you know, to, to bring them, and, and most of them don't mind, but you don't want a kid or two that can't, can't participate, you know, that's practiced and done, and I was just thinking about, because across country is one of those numbers, and, and here's the great thing about our coaches, they're driving the numbers. I mean, we have fifty-seven kids on our tennis team, or maybe more than that, maybe seventy-five kids, I don't know, but it's a large number, but we don't, they don't travel all of them at the same time. So, what we were talking about is, is possibility for those minor sports that have, you know, volleyball, uh, uh, track is one that a lot of times, because like Mr. Joe was driving into Memphis, and they weren't getting back until one or two or three in the morning sometime. And that was on a Saturday, uh, most of the time, I think, but, um, and you trouble, Ms. Mariece, a time or two.
During sophomore year.
And I, again, I want to try to-
Anyway, that's how you throw in the ban on top of it, you know, it's just, it's going to continue to be a need that we're, we're going to need to address.
These fans that you're talking about, who are you talking about driving?
Well, with those.
Regular drivers.
If you got a valid driver's license, but-
What about insurance?
That's a school, that's a school.
Well, I know what, but-
Tennessee freshman.
It can, you got driver's license. Just anybody can get it.
Well, they got to have, they got to have a valid driver's license and proof of their own personal insurance, for our record, if somebody gets in their own vehicle. For school vehicles, they're, they're a school employee in a school vehicle.
We, uh, we were even, when we were hiring coaches at the high school, and especially I thought, we're getting coaches that tell them, "You have to get your bus endorsement." But even if they do that now, they, they, most districts make, make coaches, they go, "You have to have someone on your staff with an endorsement." But even if we had them, we didn't, we wouldn't have the buses capable to, to, to transport.
All right, Britt, why don't you check in, like, you were talking about, double-check the law for 15-passenger van and what we can do, and also be looking at possibly how much we can find some used vans, at least a couple of them for, and by the next meeting we can kind of-
Yep.
We've got that 15-passenger van at church, and it's my understanding, the only time we can use it is if we got somebody to drive, it's got the CDM.
CDM.
Not a 15-passenger.
No, no, it's not everywhere.
It's eighteen?
Well, whatever it is, whatever that next-
Well, you can get a driver's license with a passenger endorsement.
Now, the educational, education, the big thing is, this is a public school education and that, it's totally different from churches and things like that. He showed me the law. We asked LD, we asked him, because we were in the same boat, could we do this? And he said, "No," and he showed us.
LD Sims is that one of two people that is hired by the state that manages all the bus wrecks, bus accidents, they do the inspections of the buses. It's hired through the THP, but that's all they do, so that's what they're assigned and commissioned to do. Since this is just a conversation, we can't take any action, we'll have this on the agenda for next month's meeting. And by that time, we should have answers from LD and some quotes for some victims.
Well, the, the only thing I can say is, because I refer eagle across the state, the J, and like, JVs that leave early, I'm going, walking into gyms and they've got a bus there with their school on it, and I ask them how they do it, and they say, "The assistant coach drove them up here." And, and, but I, we, you know, and I understand the laws, I don't know how they're getting around it, if it's just that big of a risk or what's going on, uh, because I definitely don't want to do anything, you know, that's breaking the law, but other schools are doing it, and, and I don't know how they're getting around it or if they're just saying, "That's all the way we can get them there." Like, the, the JV groups are leaving early and they don't, you know, they're having to take a bus, but if we had a, you know, if we had a, a van that, that somebody could drive-
We'll, we'll commit to, if you support it and the insurance is, is not an issue, We'll, we'll commit to, if you support it and the insurance is, is not an issue, we'll, we'll get the, we'll buy it. We'll figure out a way to get somebody, I believe we could go out here and somebody that's got one that they're not using or something that would donate to us possibly. You know, if it's something that the, the board approves, that Mr. Fields approves us doing. I mean, it's just, it is something that we deal with, you know, every sports season. And it's gonna start out with volleyball just when we get back in school.
Would two minivans be better than one fifteen-passenger?
Well, yes, certainly if we couldn't, you know, I don't know what the law says, but we all, we got, we bought three caravan, Dodge caravans is what we had.
That would, that would be better than any, I mean-
You can take two of them, one person, you can take a district, district person, you can take it to get some, I mean, it was just a-
They get good gas mileage too.
Well, I tell you those, those hundred, two hundred's too.
Gas cheaper.
You got one of those.
Here's our first van.
Don't hit it right there.
You're talking about getting big one.
I give you brass, I, I give you brass.
Would that jump that, go get me another?
We only need two more.
Work a deal and jump that thing on the park or two on this.
Two boys on you for, for the van.
I tell him, I'm gonna put the reins in the teacher's brick.
Let's have it on the agenda for the next meeting to look at two to three minivans and see what we should come up with, kind of what the call could be. I mean, I think, and it, well, the difference, we had, like I say, we had three. If one group was had to go one place, you might send that van.
Well, we, we could work that out. I mean, we, we've worked it out for the last two, three years and had to move some events and had to move some times to leave and had to tell coaches, they had to call schools and say, we can't get there till then.
We've had that done to us though. There's some sports that have lights in the gym, now they can go a little later. They, they really, I know they wanna get there and get them kids back at a decent time, but twenty minutes or so, those can be adjusted, but like the cross-countries and the, the sports that are out to cross-country, they don't, they can't light that whole, they, they have to be there. Tennis is another one that has to be there a little.
Certainly. Anybody with a license, as long as you're an employee. Okay, that's what I want to hear you. Okay, that's, that's good. I thought-
We will have all those questions to answer by the next month's meeting. I promise you. We'll have the feedback on L D, I'll make sure I have some narrative to include in your packet from Tennessee Risk Management. And then we'll by then have Ricky already promised to have a dozen fleet of them. And by that time, have a wall painted blue.
Power C.
Power C.
Trust.
Respect.
Trust and honor.
Eagle pride.
Eagle pride.
There you go.
Eagle one, link the way.
All right, we'll be looking at that at the next meeting then. The next thing over here is gonna be our tentative dates for the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty board meeting schedule. We don't have a chance to look over that, does anybody have any problems?
That freed up the third?
What, sir? I do.
Okay.
Which one?
Uh, October.
Okay.
See, I, I had my own third Thursday for the last nine or four years. And I fixed it to the fourth Thursday, so I, I had a night schedule and we got a trip we're going on and-
Well, you know, again, that was ranked and adjusted when we get posted.
Why I said you wanted to get off the third?
The third was when the one-hour meeting.
Okay.
That was why, that's why we had this.
It'd be a trip, then I'm making it.
Well, okay, in October then, let's go back to the third Thursday.
That's called break.
That's called break.